Good evening, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. On behalf of the members of the School Board and the Superintendent, I welcome each of you watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the School Division. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an unprecedented effect on all of us. We are all adapting to this new way of conducting business and the School Board is as well. Personal barriers are installed between members of the Board and our staff and visitors are masked and socially distanced in the auditorium in compliance with the Governor's orders. During this evening's meeting, some of our participants will join us in person and others will join us virtually, including Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Searls Law. We are taking these steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff and the public. We value and appreciate your partnership. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge of the flag. Here to do the honors is Ms. Francis Miller, PTA President at Denby High School. Ms. Francis?
Good evening. Tonight I'd like to share an inspirational quote by James E. Faust. "If there were no night, we would not appreciate the day, nor could we see the stars and the vastness of the heavens. We must partake of the bitter with the sweet." There is a divine purpose in the adversities we encounter every day. They prepare, they purge, they purify, and thus they bless. Could we all stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. The next item on tonight's agenda is School Board Recognitions. Dr. Parker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we are very pleased to recognize some music students. We are going to recognize our All-Virginia Music Students, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Price for acknowledgement.
Good evening. Thank you. I have the pleasure of recognizing this month's School Board honorees, who are some very gifted musicians. Our honorees this evening are among the best high school vocalists in the state and have earned the All-Virginia Distinction. To reach this accomplishment, high school students must audition and earn a top place in a district event, which makes them eligible to audition for an All-Virginia Ensemble. Newport News Public Schools is proud to recognize six students tonight who have earned this honor. As I call your name, would you please come forward? Name to the All-Virginia Chorus from Warwick High School, Natalia Brown. Natalia? She's named as a soprano II delegate. Also from Warwick High School, Josiah Dosario Reynold, bass II delegate. And rounding out, the team from Warwick, Abigail Goyette, soprano I delegate. From Woodside High School, Sky Carter, alto II, alto II delegate. Also Lyric Ellis, alto I delegate. And Lenasia Walls, alto II delegate. Auditions for the All-Virginia Chorus were held in February. The repertoire was "Where'er You Walk." These vocalists were evaluated on vocal quality, intonation, rhythmic accuracy, interpretation, diction, and sight reading, and they excelled. They'll be joining the rest of the members of the All-Virginia Chorus for a virtual event scheduled for April 23rd and 24th. So again, we want to wish all of them congratulations on being named to the All-Virginia Chorus. Please join me in one more round of applause. We'd like to get a picture of you, but before we do that, I'd like to ask your family members that are joining you tonight and your school family, would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you, thank you. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate your support. May I get your pictures?
We're gonna do Warwick first, and Woodside if you can stand right here, and then we'll switch you just because there's... It'll be easier. Thank you. Turn your picture because... Alright, thank you. Good tidings. Switch out.
Thank you, Les Willems, good morning. Congratulations again. Thank you, and we know you'll have a wonderful performance this weekend. The School Board will take about a seven-minute break so that our honorees and their guests may leave if you choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about seven minutes. Thank you.
During Virginia Agriculture Literacy Week, some special guests helped students at Watkins Early Childhood Center learn more about healthy eating. During a visit to Hampton Roads, Virginia First Lady Pamela Northam and Virginia's Chief Diversity Officer, Dr. Janice Underwood, visited the pre-kindergarten students at Watkins. Principal Sue Waxman, Newport News Superintendent Dr. George Parker, along with school leaders and local elected officials, greeted the ladies who wanted to personally thank educators for their hard work adapting to new styles of teaching, and the Child Nutrition Services Team for keeping students fed throughout this pandemic. Mrs. Northam and Dr. Underwood brought along the Virginia Agriculture in the Classroom 2021 Book of the Year, "How Did That Get in My Lunchbox", by Chris Butterworth, which they enjoyed reading to different classrooms. First Lady Northam, a former science educator herself, also visited with dual-language immersion students through Zoom during their virtual class time. In each classroom, students enjoyed talking about where their food comes from and sharing some of their favorite breakfast foods that keep them fueled for a day of learning.
Whether student athletes are spiking, sprinting, shooting, cheering, hiking, or driving, high school athletics are back. Even though fall sports arrived a season late, the simple joy of playing sports is a welcome return to some normalcy for high school athletes. For almost a year, Virginia High School League Athletics have been shut down in Newport News Public Schools due to the global coronavirus pandemic. But this winter, fall sports were opened back up, with students participating in sideline cheer, cross-country, field hockey, football, golf, and volleyball. Starting in February, student athletes in these six varsity sports began conditioning and practicing for a short but welcomed season of peninsula competition. For coaches and athletic directors, this type of season offered a new realm of daily obstacles to overcome: rescheduling games when teams were forced to quarantine, finding enough athletes for some sports, having the proper personal protective equipment, social distancing when possible, limiting the number of spectators at games, sanitizing surfaces and gear constantly, traveling safely on buses, and daily screenings are just a few of the hurdles each school managed. But the benefits for students far outweigh the logistical complications. Students have been able to play the sports they love, be around their friends and teammates, and get out of their house for some much-needed physical activity. Essentially, student athletes have had a chance to enjoy being a teenager again, with huge paybacks physically and mentally. It also gave seniors another shot at securing valuable athletic scholarships or being recruited to play sports at the collegiate level. And even with less practices to prepare and fewer games to compete in, high school student athletes are simply having fun and enjoying the experience with their teams and coaches.
To coincide with Youth Art Month in March, virtual art exhibits were peppered across social media, showcasing artwork from our amazing student artists at all grade levels. And since our talented art teachers are so influential in guiding students on their artistic journeys every day, these educators were able to assemble an impressive virtual showcase of their own amazing masterpieces. Shared on the NNPS website and across social media, the Art Teachers Virtual Art Show is aptly titled "Practicing What We Teach." From several schools and representing all grades, this virtual exhibit revealed our art teachers' exceptional talents while displaying a range of styles, techniques, and media. Colorful paintings, charcoal portraits, digital designs, breathtaking photos, gorgeous pottery, and abstract mixed media are just a sampling of the masterpieces our teachers passionately created. While viewing the online slideshow, it's evident why these instructors chose their calling to teach art to our students and why so many talented artists enjoy growing through the arts in Newport News Public Schools.
Virtual learning is a new experience for all of us. While students, families, and teachers have been navigating the unfamiliar landscape of a global pandemic for over a year, one certainty is how important self-care is for physical, emotional, spiritual, and mental health. To effectively teach and take care of our students and children, parents, caregivers, and educators must first take care of their own health and well-being. This is why self-care isn't a selfish act, but a necessary process that benefits all families. To cope with pandemic fatigue, there's a range of active self-care practices that can help reduce stress and brighten your day. Outside of work, try limiting your screen time, cut back on browsing social media, and reduce your news intake. Instead, spend this time taking a short walk, draw or paint, cook a new recipe, play a musical instrument, or learn a fun skill. Since humans are social creatures by nature, stay connected safely with friends and loved ones. Actually use your phone to call a friend, write a letter, or find a church to connect with others. And if you need professional help, many employers, including Newport News Public Schools, offer counseling and other services to assist families. By taking care of ourselves, we can effectively take care of each other and navigate our way through this pandemic together.
Welcome back. We hope you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. During our regular board meetings, we provide a time for the public to address the Board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda, as well as also towards the end of the meeting. The School Board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via web form, email, or voicemail up to 30 minutes prior to the meeting to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns and get back with you at a later time. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light at the far end here will come on. The yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and a beep indicates that your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward, and I do have two cards this evening. First card is Ms. Karen Williams.
Good evening, Dr. Parker, Mr. Brown, Ms. Searls Law, and Board members. My name is Karen Williams, and I'm here this evening to propose the name of my late husband, Dr. William B. Williams, or Billy, for consideration in the renaming of J.M. Dozier Middle School. I have already completed the online nomination form, but for the benefit of anyone who may not have known or worked with Bill, I wanted to familiarize you with his qualifications for this honor. Bill was a Newport News native, and following his graduation from Newport News High School, he went on to earn an undergraduate degree and eventually was awarded a doctorate from the College of William &amp; Mary in middle school education. He was hired by Newport News Public Schools following college graduation as a teacher at Hydenwood Elementary. He moved to Warwick High School in 1963 as a teacher and later guidance counselor. In 1970, Bill was appointed to the first of his four elementary principalships at the former Parkview Elementary School. His last school was George J. McIntosh, where he was the first principal. In 1977, he became Director of Instructional Services and later Director of Middle School Curriculum and Instructional Planning. He retired from Newport News Public Schools in 1991 after 29 and a half years of service. In the late 1970s, my husband was tasked by Dr. Don Roberts with coordinating and implementing a middle school plan in Newport News. To accomplish this goal, he collaborated with various educational consultants to prepare a staff development program for middle school personnel, and with consultants and Newport News instructional supervisors to develop the core curriculum for grades six through eight. Along with the newly-appointed middle school administrators, Bill met with architects to modify and update the buildings chosen to be converted to middle schools, and in the case of Gildersleeve, the design of the new school. He worked closely with principals and assistant principals on staff development for the new middle school faculties. Following the successful opening of middle schools in Newport News, he consulted with other school districts on their middle school program, in particular in Kansas and Texas. And in 2012, on the 30th anniversary of the middle schools in Newport News, Dr. Ashby Kilgore and the Newport News School Board formally recognized him as the architect of middle schools in Newport News. Board members, my husband was a passionate educator and student advocate inside and outside the classroom. As the architect of middle schools in Newport News, I believe and hope you will also, that he is an ideal candidate for this honor. Thank you very much for your attention, and if you have any things that you would like to address to me, please feel free. I happen to bring along his certificate with me, and back there, there's a big book with his educational plan, in-service plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next card I have is for Mr. Dave DeWicky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for allowing a parent to provide some feedback in these difficult times. My name is Dave DeWicky, and I'm a parent of two freshmen at Warwick High School this year. And I have a couple observations and a request for the Board. For us, virtual warning is not working out for our girls. Their grades are still very good, but their depth of understanding of the subject matter is not what it has been within school learning in the past. And also, they've lost motivation and enjoyment at school, and their mental health has deteriorated. We're now doing hybrid in-school, two days a week, two days a week, and virtual two days. This is an improvement overall virtual. However, the requirement for simultaneous in-class and hybrid instruction that's currently implemented is taking away from in-class learning. We believe that the most effective approach for our kids, we back to school full-time with no simultaneous in-school and virtual learning, separate those roles if both are necessary. I think it'd be better for the students as well as the burden on the teachers. And our request for the School Board is to clearly define what the intentions are for the fall, before the end of this school year if possible. And parents need this information so we can plan for our children's educational future. And with that, I thank the Board.
Thank you, Mr. DeWicky. Thank you all for your comments this evening. We are now going to move on to Section 3, the consent agenda, which includes item 3.01 minutes from the regular session on March 23rd, 2021, 3.02 minutes from the work session on March 9th, 2021, 3.03 minutes from the public hearing on March 16th, 2021, 3.04 financial reports, including the revenue report for March 2021, the expense report for March 2021, and the Child Nutrition Services report for March 2021, 3.05 the personnel report. At this time, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, obviously, Ms. Searls Law coming in remotely, to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second invited Mr. Harris. Any discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Four. Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Carrie Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Mrs. Ammon.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Section 4, our action items. The first is item 4.01, the Special Education Annual Plan. And Dr. Parker, I believe we have a presentation before we vote on that plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that presentation was provided to the Board at the March meeting by Dr. Mitchell, and who is standing by for any questions that the Board may have regarding the Special Education Annual Plan. We look forward to the Board entertaining a vote at this time regarding that plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the Special Education Plan this time? With that, may I have a motion to adopt the Special Education Annual Plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved we adopt the Special Education Plan as we had.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Second of Dr. Best. All right. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Best, four. Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Carrie Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Searls Law, four.
Mrs. Ammon.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right. Thank you. The next item is item 4.02, which is our proposed 2021-22 school calendar. Dr. Parker, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At last month's meeting, we, the Board, passed a approval for a post-Labor Day school start. We asked for the Board's patience in allowing us to go back and look at some specific calendar days to include items such as professional development for teachers in the approved calendar, and we are coming back tonight for your consideration and approval of the 2021-22 calendar. Mrs. Brooks will walk through the calendar with the Board and the community and ask for your support and approval. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Parker. It's my pleasure to share with you the proposed dates for professional learning opportunities for our staff members based on the post-Labor Day calendar that you approved at your March 23rd meeting. Thank you. The proposed professional learning days that were initially determined by our Teaching and Learning Team, and then we shared the proposed dates with our School Calendar Committee, which includes representatives from our Academic Services Department, our Support Services, and our parents. And then we also shared the proposed dates with our principals and teachers to get their input. So the dates that I'm sharing with you this evening represents all of the feedback that we obtained through that process. The first professional learning opportunity work will occur on Friday, October 1st, which will be a half-day dismissal for students with independent learning for students in the afternoon while teachers are participating in professional development. Now, while Tuesday, November 2nd is an election day and students do not report, it is also the end of the first marking period. So we are proposing that it be a teacher workday in the morning with professional development in the afternoon. And Wednesday, December 15th, will be a half-day dismissal for students with independent learning for students in the afternoon while teachers are participating in professional development. Now, as we enter 2022, Friday, January 28th is the end of the first semester, and will continue to be a full day of professional development, which is consistent with our neighboring school divisions on the peninsula. In February, Wednesday, the 16th, will be a half-day dismissal for students with independent learning for students in the afternoon while teachers will be participating in professional development. And throughout the month of March, teachers will have various opportunities for synchronous and asynchronous professional development so that we may maximize instructional time for students, particularly as we approach the SOL testing period and other assessments. Now, after collaborating with Academic Services and Human Resources to determine these dates, and after receiving input from our stakeholders, particularly our teachers and principals, they all felt very strongly about maintaining the integrity of 180 impersonal instructional days for students on the calendar, which will help us address student learning loss due to the pandemic. Now, the designated days will also allow us to provide additional time for eureka math coaching, intensive literacy training, and cultural competence training that is being required by the state for all teachers and licensed administrators beginning in the fall of 2021. And just as we provide various learning opportunities or virtual learning opportunities for our students, we will leverage our virtual learning environment to provide synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities for our staff. And now I'll share just a few highlights from the 2021 calendar in general. As a reminder, the calendar schedules time for family conferences during each semester, and I hope everyone enjoyed the two-week winter break this year because across the region, we will be observing a two-week winter break again next school year, beginning on Monday, December 20th, and continuing through Friday, December 31st, with schools and offices reopening on Monday, January 3rd of 2022. And the month of January also includes, I think we're a slide ahead, the month of January also includes the Dr. King holiday, and in February, schools and offices will be closed again in observance of President's Day. Think we're frozen, but I'll continue to talk about the calendar. I also wanted to mention that the calendar includes enough instructional hours to cover up to three days that we can use to make up any time lost due to inclement weather and dangerous road conditions. And you may recall that we will be able to count inclement weather days next year as unscheduled virtual learning days as a result of new legislation that was recently passed by the General Assembly. And throughout the peninsula, spring break will be the first Monday through Friday in April, with the break being April 4th through the 8th of 2022. And lastly, we are including the tentative graduation ceremony dates for our seniors, which will be Saturday and Sunday, June 11th and 12th. I was going to leave you with a visual representation of the calendar, and there it is. And it includes a chart of the instructional days per marking period, our report card issue dates, our half-day dismissals, and notations of the days when schools are not in session. So in terms of next steps, we're requesting approval of the proposed calendar for next school year this evening, but the school year this evening with the designated professional learning days. And once approved, we will publicize the calendar through our school newsletters, our electronic communications such as newslines and board briefs, and on our school websites and the school division's webpage. So this concludes my report this evening. I'll be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. At this time, do we have a motion to approve the school calendar?
Mr. Chairman, Gary Hunter, I make a motion to approve the proposed 2021-22 school calendar.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. All right. Time for discussion. Is there any questions about the, the calendar before we call the roll? All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Four, Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Searls Law, four.
Mrs. Amon.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 4.03. I believe we have a health insurance credit resolution on the agenda tonight. Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mrs. Hotts, our Director of Human Resources, has a very short presentation to share with you regarding this healthcare credit resolution, and we're asking for the board to consider their support of this resolution this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the few moments just to share the background and the basis for the resolution that we're asking you to approve this evening. First of all, I want to clarify, make sure everybody's on the same page with me. We're talking about a healthcare benefit that the Virginia retirement system is offering. So we're not talking about healthcare credit that Newport News Public Schools offers their employees, but this is part of the VRS program that we're referring to. Okay? So the way that VRS approaches this is they, they break up into a couple of different groups of employees. And the first group that they've served the longest is what they call their professional staff. And so those are your teachers, your administrators, other professionals, structural assistants, security officers. And the credit that has been placed for them for a very long time is $4 per year of service each month for 12 months. So if I retire at this point, I have 30 years of service, and so I would receive a credit of $120 a month for 12 months towards my healthcare expenses when I retire. So that's the way that works. Okay? Go ahead, Michelle. Now, the, just giving you a little bit more background, in 2000, before 2009, the big group of our support staff, our transportation, our plant services, our CNS employees, they were all serviced in the city retirement system or what we call NERF. Let me remember that, that acronym. After 2009, that, that plan was closed to our employees, and anyone hired at 2009 forward was placed in the VRS system. Now, when this group of employees of ours started in the VRS program at that point, there was no healthcare credit provided to the support staff group as a benefit. Well, in 2015, VRS did make the offer to school divisions to change that and to basically provide $1.50 per year of service for 12 months, each month, as a healthcare credit to this particular group. The board that was in place at that point approved that resolution and very quickly jumped on wanting to provide that benefit to our staff. And of course, for them, unfortunately, that meant $1.50 if they had served 30 years of service, which was only $45 of, of credit each month towards healthcare. What we have now is the opportunity to increase that. So VRS has notified us that we have the ability to decide that we want to increase that from $1.50 to $2.50 per service, year of service per month for our support staff group as well. And so that is the opportunity that's before us and is what is written in the, the resolution that we're asking you to approve this evening. The estimated cost at this point is $14,000 more than what we're paying right now. And I'll remind you, that number's not very big, and that's because at this point, not all of our support staff in those areas are in VRS. We still have a, a good group of them that are still in the city retirement. And in fact, specifically, our numbers are, there's still 343 of our support staff members that are in the city retirement with 585 in VRS. So when, at some point in this future, we will have some increases to this cost, however, we want to have some increase anyway because this turnover would happen, we would have new employees that replace those that retired out of the city retirement plan come in under VRS. So we would automatically have to pay more for that for the new employees. This increase is just a slightly bit more, but if the rate were to stay the same and that when we got to the point in which all of our employees were under VRS, we're only talking about an estimate of about $42,000 a year for this benefit. So certainly what we think, and that includes the full $2.50. So certainly what we think is a, is a worthwhile benefit to provide to our employees. And then, of course, as we said at the beginning, our next steps are to ask you to approve the resolution that's before you this evening. And then what we will begin July 1st, we will start that increased payment to VRS each month for the employees that we have in those groups that are in the VRS system. Okay? Does anybody have any que, oh, questions, General?
All right. So at this time, can we have the resolution pulled up on screen, the PDF? All right. So there is the resolution in front of you, which is also included in your board packets. May I have a motion to approve, to approve the health insurance credit resolution?
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion. You can go ahead, Mr. Hunter.
No, go ahead. Ladies before men.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the VRS health insurance credit resolution as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Mr. Hunter, would you like to second?
Yes, Gary Hunter, I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. All right. Any, any questions? All right. There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Best.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Searls Law, four.
Mrs. Amon.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to section five, which is our reports and information section, and 5.01 is the return to learn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Monthly, we have been bringing back a report to the board on our return to learn planning as it progresses through, as we progress through the school year. This month being no different, we will provide an update for the board and community on, on some recent changes and progress towards providing quality instruction toward, for students. We'll start off with Mrs. Rousseau, who will give the standard safety update, and she will hand it off to instruction. And then we also have some good news, some graduation information and some, and athletics. So a little bit more information that we'll share this evening for the board. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Rousseau to start it off. Mrs. Rousseau, are you, are you joining us this evening?
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I'm here.
Thank you, ma'am.
You can't see me, but I'm here. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, members of the board. As Dr. Parker said, we are going to start our return to learn update for you this evening as we have in the past with an update, brief update on our COVID data. So the slide we have up shows the new indicators and thresholds we shared with you last month that the CDC has developed for reporting community transmission of COVID-19. The case rate and positivity rate are the same data points we've been using the entire time to track our progress in containing the virus, but they are now presented in a seven-day base, on a seven-day basis instead of the previous 14-day basis. So the chart that you see on the left is updated on a weekly basis. You can see that this was a 410, so they're not quite weekly, but that's the most recent information that's on the website as of today. And this data helps us determine what strategies are recommended for mitigation, and particularly distancing in our classrooms is impacted by this. You can see there are four levels of transmission, low, moderate, substantial, and high. And as you can see, unfortunately, Newport News is still in a high level of transmission. The chart on the right is VDH data, and that is updated on a daily basis, not quite daily because this is 419. I pulled this yesterday. They do have 420 today, but anyway, you can see that it's presented on a daily rate basis. So the case rate is 22.3, that is contrasted with the weekly data, 152.8 on the left for the CDC information. But they both basically say the same thing. The case rate you see is trending down, decreasing, and the case rate, 11.3%, is shown on this slide, this is from yesterday, as fluctuating because it was decreasing for only 13 days. Today, it is shown as decreasing because it went down again yesterday, and so it's been going down for 14 days. And once the direction is set for 14 days, it is determined to either be increasing or decreasing rather than fluctuating. So, but the data is generally saying about the same thing, as you would expect that it would. So for the moment, we are still in high transmission. So if you could go to the next slide, Michelle. These are the thresholds for transmission. As I mentioned, low, moderate, substantial, and high. And again, if you, you can see that cases over 100 are high transmission, which is where we are, we're at 152. And positivity rates over 10% are high, and since we are 11.9 or 11.3, depending on which chart you use, we're also still high in case rate. So we do hope to report to you at some point in the future that we are trending further down and that we're going to get below the high level of transmission, but we are not there right yet. And then just to also update you briefly on vaccinations, this is really better news, I think. Approximately 85% of Newport News Public School staff have chosen to receive the vaccination for COVID-19. 98% of those that have opted to receive the vaccination have received at least their first dose already. We've been seeing some positive results from that as staff members are identified as close contacts. If they have been vaccinated, completely vaccinated, received both of their vaccines, and have passed two weeks beyond their second one, they do not have to quarantine when they're identified as a close contact unless they have symptoms. And so we've seen many of our staff now who have been identified as close contacts but have not had to step away from the workplace. So that's been a good result of the vaccinations and certainly what we hope to see. Also, another big step for Virginia, and really, I think, for all states in the nation, all of our health districts in Virginia have moved into phase two as of Sunday, which opened the eligibility for COVID vaccines to anyone ages 16 and older. As you know, they're still working on vaccines trials for children, but for individuals aged 16 and older, they're eligible now to get a COVID vaccine. So that's really good news, and we hope that those who are so inclined will take advantage of that. And I'm going to pass it on now to Dr. Mangan-Mott to update you on what's going on with regard to teaching and learning. Dr. Mangan-Mott?
It's me, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, members of the board, Dr. Parker. You know, kind of funny. It's great to be here this evening and a pleasure to see you all again. I grabbed and put my presentation in this folder right here, which I had to giggle to myself because it says ridiculously good ideas. And that is where our presentation sits tonight. So I am here to just give you a few updates on some instructional decisions that we have made for quarter four in our instructional program with teaching and learning. The first one, I'm really excited to share with you. We have an elementary reading intervention program taking place. We looked at our quarter three PALS data and our reading inventory data for all K through five. And as expected, we saw that there was a gap in learning for our earliest learners. And so what we did is we decided, and I say we, and that's not appropriate at all, I really need to give credit where credit is due, which is our Director of Elementary Instruction, Lori Wall, sitting back there, and her elementary literacy team really developed this plan. And I really think it's going to make huge gains for students in Newport News. What they have decided based on the data is that they were going to take all resources that were in the K through five elementary arena and funnel it to K through two because that's where we're seeing the largest gap in learning. What they did, they kind of took like a three-step approach, and I don't know if step is the appropriate word. But the first thing they did is look at the curriculum and the pacing for our tier one instruction. So tier one instruction basically is your whole, whole class, your classroom instruction at the bottom level. And what they decided to do is kind of revise it to really look at what were the, the identified PAL decision data points where we had to focus instruction. And so they looked at phonemic awareness, they looked at phonics and handwriting and reading application. And they developed eight weeks. Now, they're, it's a team of three. They developed eight weeks of lesson plans for all K through two teachers that are focusing, focusing on those data points for students. And our teachers are really excited, and they, I've heard feedback telling me how great these lessons are. So really giving them kudos. And then these, these lesson plans are really geared towards small group instruction and not whole group instruction. The second thing that they developed is all tier two. Again, tier two, you have classroom instruction, all kids. And then kids that aren't getting classroom instruction move on to tier two. So all tier two intervention services that are provided by our reading specialists, by our interventionists, by our tutors, that are generally K through five, we've moved them all to K through two. So they are supporting classrooms in K through two right now. The next thing that they did is that our PALS identified hybrid students will be given an additional hour of reading instruction. Why that is, they're following the newcomer schedule. So ever, all students that are in instruction right now, they will leave at the dismissal time, and these students will stay an hour later. And this is where they get intensive reading instruction from the reading specialist, the interventionist, and the tutors. So in our Title II schools, that means that we can serve up to 12 students. In our non-Title I schools, they can serve up to six, and if there's an additional tutor, they can serve six more. So we're really excited about this plan. We're hoping that we see gains in instruction, whereas normally with just regular instruction, we might not see the same amount of gains. The next instructional decision is, is exciting, and I know for parents and for students as well. We know that the CDC has kind of provided us some flexibility in social distancing, especially at the elementary levels. And so prior to the CDC releasing this, this, or allowing us flexibility, we had a waiting list at the elementary schools. We could not get everyone in who wanted to come hybrid because of social distancing. And now because they've released it, we can allow more students in. 20 out of 29 of our elementary schools do not have a waiting list like, right now, and they're able to maintain six feet distancing. But nine had a waiting list, and we were able to take those students off the waiting list as of April 20th. There are no students on the waiting list to return to hybrid instruction at the elementary school. So just to see what, we can fluctuate between six and up to three feet. You know, like we, we, if we need to, we can go five feet, we can do four feet. So the next slide shows you the nine classrooms, or the nine schools, and the number of classrooms that are affected and how close they have to move. So at General Stanford, you can see they're at three feet apart, but then other schools are at four feet apart. This right here is a total of 27 out of 605 elementary classrooms. So that's only 4% of our classroom populations that are affected and have to move less than six feet apart. This particular slide, I know that our parents will be really, really excited about, and students too at the, the high school level and the middle school level, who really feel like they need more than two days of in-person instruction. So the CDC guidance right now and current metrics, secondary schools have to say six feet social distancing. But we've made a decision as a division that we can allow our students that are going two days a week to move four days a week based on our attendance data. Now, some classes, that's not going to work out. Some classes are at full capacity. So we have a process in place for all elementary or all secondary schools, and parents or students can request to move to four days of in-person instruction. And what's going to happen, principals are going to review with their teams, and they will determine if they have capacity limits and confirm or deny if the students or can return to four days of instruction. And on the next slide... And on the next slide, the process that we have in place, you can see it's kind of a tiered approach. We're looking at our vulnerability index. So if you request and you're on the vulnerability index, that gives you a higher criteria. Students that are at risk for course failure have another priority. And then, of course, any family request if we can meet the six feet social distancing requirement. Our final date for families to adjust, this is really important for our families at home who are listening in. The final date to adjust this learning preference is going to be May 5. So just please make note and plan accordingly. So that summarizes some of the ridiculously good ideas that we have going on in teaching and learning. We have lots of great things going on in the division, but those are the major highlights. Yes?
That's great that parents will have the option now to go from two days to four days. How will we determine which kids will be able to go from two to four days? Will it be the kids that are most needed with the lowest GPA? Or?
Yeah, that's exactly. It's that the tiered approach. So the teams are going to look together, they're going to come together. And it's going to be those students on the vulnerability index, especially those that are at risk for failure, and then all others. As you know, numbers are low across the division. And we feel like we can accommodate most of the requests. But there are some classrooms that are at full capacity right now. And so it just depends on the student's schedule and how we have to tier the requests.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ely. Other questions? Yes, Dr. Best.
Eight weeks, has the eight weeks begun for the eight weeks of prepared lessons?
Yes, the eight weeks have begun. The May 3 starts the extra hour after school.
And who does the extra hour? Is it reading specialist?
The reading specialist, interventionist, and the kindergarten. If there are kindergarten tutors, they will be there as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Ms. Ammon?
Yeah, and I like, there's a lot of good ideas. And I'm encouraged and excited to hear about the K to 2 and the focus on that. Students in grades 3 through 5 that might be having challenges with reading and that sort of thing, what are we doing for them to make sure they don't fall further behind?
You know, I have Mrs. Wall here, and I want her to come on up and speak to that because she really is the mastermind behind this plan. And I want her to be able to speak to that.
I figured you might ask that question. So we certainly didn't forget our 3-5 learners. And we've been working with our teachers in grades 3 through 5 to provide them differentiated small group instruction support as well. When you look at our 3-5 data, our students in 3-5, even if they are struggling in the area of reading, they're still on the trajectory of moving forward. Where some of our pre-K through 2 students, they were flatlining and not moving at all. And so some of the pieces that we have in place already for 3 through 5, we're continuing and then working with the reading specialists and teachers, looking at just what we need to kind of just differentiate for our kids with some of those foundational skills that are already embedded into the curriculum. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
We haven't forgot them.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Manglomont, for those ridiculously good ideas.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mike Nichols for athletics.
Thanks, Dr. Barnett.
Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, Members of our School Board, and Dr. Parker. I am not Mike Nichols, I am Dr. Felicia Barnett, Executive Director of Secondary School Leadership. But in collaboration with Mr. Mike Nichols, our Supervisor for Youth Development, I am pleased to bring to you an update on some of our spring sports for this upcoming season and inform you of the mitigation strategies we have in place for our spring sports program. Our varsity spring sports began on Monday, April 12. However, our JV sports have been suspended for the spring season. Baseball, outdoor track, soccer, softball, and tennis began practicing on April 12. And April 26 is the first contest date for each sport with the exception of tennis. And the first contest date for tennis is April 21. Our state competitions for sports will end throughout the month of June. And spectators at our games must wear masks and maintain a physical distance of 10 feet. On our next slide, I'd like to share some of our mitigation strategies and process. All student athletes must take a health screening questionnaire before reporting to practice or to a game. If they answer yes to any of the questions, they will not be allowed to practice or compete, and they must return home. There'll also be questions as they report to teams for practice. Once they're checked in our process and allowed to practice, they must maintain their mask. And our athletic department has provided each school with an ample supply. Additionally, for the athletes and coaches to periodically clean their hands and equipment, we've also provided hand sanitizer, masks, paper towels, and disinfectants to clean the equipment. Each school has also presented a practice plan to include the athletic check-in procedures, their pod makeup, mitigation procedures, and guidelines. Our mitigation strategies are to include no shared water bottles or shared athletic towels or clothing or shoes. Also, coaches are required to wear face coverings at all times. And our athletes must wear a face covering before and after workouts. A coaches' meeting was held earlier this year, led by Mr. Mike Nichols, with our coaches, athletic directors, and trainers to discuss the mitigation strategies. And each school's athletic director also meets with their coaches to discuss their school specifically and how they will implement their plan. Once the teams are selected, the coach and athletic director further discuss mitigation strategies with players and their family members. And also, located on the website, is a student questionnaire and assumption of risk waiver. I'll be happy to entertain any questions at this time around our athletic program.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Barnett.
You're welcome. And now I am pleased to announce our plans for this year's graduation to celebrate the class of 2021. Our graduations are scheduled between the dates of June 7 and June 11 to be held at Todd Stadium. The current restrictions outlined by our governor place a limit of 30% capacity or 5,000 in an outdoor venue, whichever is the lesser. So to be able to hold it at Todd Stadium, we can accommodate approximately 32 visitors during the graduation ceremonies. Our graduates will receive approximately six tickets. And we're excited that we are able to continue with our traditional seated graduation ceremony as we have had in the past at the Hampton Coliseum. But this year, it will be held outdoors. All guests will maintain a six-foot physical distance and wear masks. Listed on the screen at this time are our graduation dates and times along with alternative dates for rain. We are working diligently with our high schools to provide a memorable experience for our students and celebrate their achievements. Our school division will continue to post updates for our graduation on our Newport News Public Schools website. As well as each school will share information about graduation and senior activities to their students and families. At this time, if you have any questions around our graduation plans, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yes, Mr. Ely, please go ahead.
So you said each family will have six tickets, is that correct?
Each student will be provided approximately six tickets for the ceremony.
And I know, well, earlier today, a parent called me about the time. I know some parents called Dr. Best too as well. Is there a reason why that they're doing the week versus the weekend?
Well, traditionally, when we're at the Hampton Coliseum, we're able to host our ceremonies throughout the weekend. But because we are having outdoor ceremonies, to take into consideration possibly weather and the arrangement of our traffic coming off of Warwick and just the organization of the program, it's best suited that we're able to do one school per day. And we certainly wanted to host it in the morning time where hopefully, because we're in June, the weather is a bit cooler so that we can have our seated ceremony at 10:00 a.m. each day for each school. And then have the opportunity, if, which we hope, there was rain, that we could accommodate that school the following day in the afternoon.
Got you. So a big factor was, so families would know. Because I know families asked me, they asked Dr. Best, why I have to take off of work during the day? So one main reason is traffic and?
Well, we wanted to be able to accommodate our family since it is an outdoor ceremony. And we're having it at Todd Stadium. It is a seated ceremony that will last approximately an hour. And we wanted to host that ceremony in the morning hours where we think it might be cooler for our guests. And then just organizing a school each day may make it a smoother transition for each graduation. We also wanted to reserve the afternoon time so that in case it rains during that scheduled morning time, we could then move the alternate day to the next day in the afternoon for that school. In case families may have guests coming from out of town, those guests may not have to stay as long. They can go to the ceremony the very next day. So we did take into consideration knowing even last year, we had our ceremony during the week, and families may have to take off. And we understand that challenge. But we're really trying to work to make sure that we can accommodate as many as possible.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Barnett.
So, Mr. Chairman, there was one area that we needed to speak about is next year. And while we've been giving monthly updates on our return-to-learn planning, we want to ease the concerns of our community and make sure that they are aware that we are thinking about next year, that we are planning for next year. We are continuing to monitor the CDC guidelines and VDH and our governor's restrictions in order to make future determinations. It's our intention to be in school five days a week next year, starting the school year. Now, there are several things that we will, logistical things and requirements that we will have to maneuver. We'll have to maneuver three-foot separations, whether that will be minimized. We'll have to maneuver whether there are any other CDC guidance or guidelines that come out. We will definitely be closely monitoring the vaccination schedule. We believe that students will start being vaccinated somewhere in the fall. We don't know where that will be. And then we also have to plan our virtual academy out so that we can accommodate students virtually. But our goal is to have students in school five days a week with as minimal in-person and virtual continuous consistent teaching. I think I'm saying that right. Teachers teaching virtual and in-person at the same time, as minimal as possible. Now, we will obviously provide parents with guidance, families with guidance as far as how to enroll their students for next year and what setting will be best and appropriate for their child. More information will come out. But it is our intention and intent to have five full days of instruction for students next year. And we will be monitoring, working with the state guidelines and with the CDC to make sure that we are meeting all safety requirements as we plan to do so. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that that gets out in the public, that it's said officially, that that is our intent and our goal. We will do everything possible to make that happen for our community.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. All right. With that, we'll move on to Item 5.02, which is our PTA Annual Report.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, and Board Members, and Dr. Parker. Thank you all for having me this evening. I am Lou Manor. I am the President for Newport News Council PTA. The purpose of this presentation is to give updates on all the great things that PTA has been doing despite the challenges that we've had to endure during this pandemic. PTA, Newport News Council PTA is made up of four officers. Myself, our Treasurer, Ms. Bertha Thompson, who's actually here today, our Vice President, Ms. Cecilia Flores, and our Secretary, Ms. Charlotte Clark. We are a partnership between parents and educators who strive to enhance student learning and enrich the lives of the students within the schools. The PTA is also a forum for parents to obtain knowledge and voice their opinions about what is happening in our schools. PTA addresses issues that are important to parents, students, and public school administrators. We fight for full funding, quality teachers, and the capability to drive, for schools to thrive, sorry. What are some of the advantages for joining PTA? There are so many advantages for joining PTA. Let's start with connecting. We all know that networking is a key tool that allows us to access opportunities that we may not be able to locate on our own. As an association dedicated to speaking for every child with one voice, we are deeply committed to furthering diversity, equity, and inclusion across America. We believe every child has a right to a high-quality education. To achieve this, we have been committed to building a strong community and providing opportunities for our children to realize their full potential through special programs, inclusive, school-wide initiatives. And PTA makes a true impact on every student. Currently, we have 30 active PTA/PTSA units, which is absolutely great considering this past year. Some of our PTAs have not been able to operate, and that is due to the additional responsibility that the pandemic has endured on them. However, we stand ready to work with them as we rebuild our PTAs to achieve a 100% school participation. Community involvement. We actually have been very active in the community. The Council of PTAs has partnered with Boots on Bikes to support reading throughout the school year. Many local units addressed the challenges of the pandemic by providing gift cards, hosting food drives, and providing safe grab bags for our students and staff. Those grab bags consisted of sanitizers, school supplies, and disposable masks. I'm going to get to it today. All right. Our very own Vice President, Ms. Flores, has been one of our strongest liaison as we continue to address the needs of our ESL's families. We share their concerns directly to our educators and collaborate with them on ways to address their needs. All right. Our high school PTA joined together and hosted a membership-slash-scholarship drive. The purpose of this was to raise money so that we were able to give one student from each of our high school a $500 scholarship. We had the pleasure and the support of our Virginia State PTA President, Ms. Donna Colombo, to stop by our drive and join each PTA. Joining the PTA opens so many doors of opportunities to collaborate with our educators. We participate with Newport News Public Schools for our teacher of the day, teacher for the day, I apologize. We currently serve on NMPS Education Foundation, the Health Advisory Committee, and the Superintendent's Advisory Budget Committee. Many of you have met some of our PTA leaders at the school board meetings. They provided their invocation and pledge. Here are a few of our programs that we sponsor on a local unit. The theme this year for our reflection was "I Matter Because." The theme for our Citizenship Essay was "How Can We Stand Together When We Are So Far Apart?" The deadline for our scholarships and our Volunteer of the Year ended this past Sunday, April 18. We will be presenting those recipients at the next school board meeting on May 18. This year, PTA celebrated so many highlights from local, state, and national level. Virginia PTA inducted our first African-American Virginia PTA President, Ms. Pamela Crum. Ms. Crum is a native of Hampton and has over 30 years of service with us. Ms. Crum serves now as our 45th Virginia State PTA President. We also was acknowledged for our DMB PTA having to increase their membership for over 100% for the school year 2019-2020. Newport News, oh, I'm sorry. We had the pleasure of having our very own PTA student member and your school board representative, Mr. Jordan Moody, to give opening remarks to our annual meeting. and your school board representative, Mr. Jordan Moody, to give opening remarks to our, um, annual meeting. We have now come to the end of the presentation. On behalf of Newport News Council PTA, we like to thank you for all of your support, and I would also like to thank all of our local units for all the hard work that they continue to put in.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? All right, well, thank President Maynard, on behalf of the school board, we thank you for being a valued partner and for all the hard work that the PTA does in our community.
Thank you.
Well, now we'll have, uh, item five point oh three, which is our preschool update.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are in for a treat this evening. We very rarely get a chance to talk about preschool and, uh, this, this evening we're bringing a, uh, update and report to the board. Uh, presenting this evening are, uh, Ms. Anne Marie Han- Hanahan, our pre-case specialist, and Ms. Janine Bryant, our special education supervisor, who will be presenting the PEEP program. And they have some important information to share with the board and community regarding the great work happening at the preschool level.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searl Law, Board members, and Dr. Parker. My name is Anne Marie Hanahan. I am the preschool instructional specialist within the Curriculum and Development Department, and I am also the VPI Coordinator for Newport News Public Schools. I am here to give you an update on the preschool planning process for the upcoming two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As you know, preschool and early childhood has had a long, successful history in Newport News. For much of that history, our program has focused on serving as many four-year-olds as possible, specifically those most at risk. Specifically those most at risk with the lens of improving school readiness. While our program continues to focus on school readiness, recent shifts in Virginia have provided the opportunity to make a shift in Newport News. In recent years, our governor has been a strong advocate for increasing and improving early childhood experiences. Governor Northam and the Virginia Department of Ed have implemented several initiatives under their program for building a unified early childhood system. Some of these initiatives include new standards, which will be implemented next school year. These Virginia Early Learning and Development Standards, or the ELDS, are birth-to-five-year-old standards and look at the developmental progression of a child across his or her early years. Another exciting initiative is providing VPI funding for our, for existing preschool programs such as ours to include and serve three-year-old students. Our pro- program currently only serves four-year-olds. However, we are excited to share that we are in the very early stages of planning for expanding to include three-year-olds in future school years. Because of this shift, a natural next step was for us to consider officially changing our name from First Step to Newport News Public Schools Preschool. This rebranding provides continuity and builds community across the division, aligns with the Department of Adverbage, and allows future three-year-old expansion to be included in our preschool program. Because of this shift to a birth-to-five per- focus, and as we continue to ensure our program is about prevention and readiness, the preschool program has been working to bridge our early childhood supports in a variety of ways. In the nineteen-twenty school year, we adopted and implemented a new curriculum, the Creative Curriculum. This curriculum has a strong focus on learning through play and inquiry and will be able to expand to be used with three-year-olds. During the pandemic, we have been able to provide our families with resources and support with Ready Rosie, which is a family engagement tool that connects to our curriculum and supports families even beyond the preschool years. Additionally, we have strengthened our collaborative partnerships, specifically those with UVA, the UVA Castle Department, and Virginia Quality, focusing on improving teacher-student interactions and building capacity through teacher professional development. As we began to look towards the next preschool year, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, with the governor's initiatives as a driving force, we established these two focal points as our guiding north stars in the planning process. Number one, ensuring our program has the capacity to serve as many at-risk preschool-aged children as possible with the goal of expanding our program to include three-year-olds in the future. And two, maximizing our preschool funding, which as you know, comes from a variety of sources. The Virginia Preschool Initiative Grant, the VPI Grant, the Title I Grant, and the Newport News Operating Budget. All of these together will help us to provide high-quality equitable access to our youngest learners in Newport News. With our two major focal points in mind, we convened a preschool planning committee to assist in some preschool planning conversations and some decision-making process. You can see that we invited representation from a variety of departments across the division to provide insight and expertise concerning some key preschool decisions that would help us in our planning preparations. This committee worked together to determine what our next steps could and should be to help our program on our journey to increasing access for more children. Given the renewed focus on increasing this access to at-risk students and supporting families in need, we began to explore the possibility of transitioning the six preschool classrooms currently at Lee Hall Early Childhood Center. Lee Hall Early has previously served the majority of our military families with preschool-aged children in Newport News. This transition out of Lee Hall would allow us the opportunity to provide targeted support specifically to our military families on Fort Eustis. Additionally, because the goal of the governor and the Department of Ed's initiatives is to increase access, transitioning out of Lee Hall Early would also allow us to focus more heavily on the strength of our early childhood centers. If any of you have had the privilege of visiting one of our early childhood centers, you know these centers are uniquely special communities, which offer a warm and welcoming experience for our Newport News preschool students. As we look to expand and include three-year-olds in the future, this will give us the opportunity to build our community, our early childhood communities further and strengthen the connection between the three and four-year-old experience. As part of the planning process for transitioning the Lee Hall Early classes, we considered staffing, transportation, building capacity, community response and impact, future expansion of preschool, early childhood initiatives, and funding in making the final recommendation. With these considerations in mind, we recommended to Dr. Parker that the best option moving into the next year was to move most of the Lee Hall Early classrooms to Denby Early Childhood Center, but also open two classrooms at General Stanford Elementary School. As I outlined, opening two classrooms at General Stanford will allow Newport News to provide specific support to our military families on Fort Eustis by allowing their preschool students to attend school on base with their K through five siblings. Additionally, these moves will allow our program to ensure we have the established building community and space capacity to expand our program in the coming years. Here, you can see the proximity between where Lee Hall Early is located in relation to where these six classrooms will be relocated. So just down the road, just down Warwick Boulevard to Denby Early Childhood Center, as well as nearby at General Stanford, which is on Fort Eustis. Here you can see all of the early childhood sites for the current school year on the left, and then the adjustment that will be made for the upcoming school year on the right. Through our current enrollment process, as families are invited to register their child for our preschool program, they will be notified which of the fa- the four early childhood sites their child will attend. Here you can see the projected student enrollment numbers for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. These are the total number of students we are working to enroll per early childhood site. And finally, this is the timeline for the updates I have outlined. You can see our planning process began in January. The Lee Hall Early staff, as well as all Newport News preschool staff, was notified of these changes in February, and we began accepting preschool applications last month through our new online application. We are looking forward to registering our preschool students in the coming weeks, and these students who will begin preschool in the fall will be our class of twenty thirty-five. No, well, how does that make you feel? Thank you for your time this evening. I am now going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Bryant to discuss early childhood special education updates, and we will both be available at the, and happy to answer any questions you may have at the end. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searl Law, Board members, and Dr. Parker. My name is Janice Bryant, and I am the Preschool Special Education Supervisor within the Student Advancement Department. This evening, you will be provided an update on the program for educating exceptional preschoolers for the upcoming twenty-one, twenty-two school year, known as PEEP. The process we engaged in to identify increased opportunities for students and staff, as well as the stakeholders involved in the process, will be reviewed. The focus will primarily be on the changes that impact students and staff at the Gatewood PEEP Center and the plan for next school year. Newport News Public School is proud of our preschool special education program, which is known as the Program for Educating Exceptional Preschoolers, PEEP. As you know, the focus is on serving two-to-five-year-olds with special needs. Currently, we have fifteen different sites, which serve our little ones, with thirty-five classrooms, seventy-four wonderful staff, and a total of two hundred ninety students. The focus is to improve student and school readiness and independent skills to enable our students to be better equipped for kindergarten. Just a little bit about the Gatewood Center. Generally, Gatewood serves students with intensive medical needs, and two nurses were on hand to med- to manage those medical needs, such as tube feedings, et cetera. Over the years, the center expanded to include students who lived near Gatewood and has also been used as an overflow location when the other sites were full. Students with medical conditions have also been assigned to other sites serving PEEP students. Beginning the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, PEEP students will no longer attend school at the Gatewood site, but instead attend other school sites. Here is a breakdown of the staff at Gatewood. HR will work with staff and departments for placement. The assessment team will be reassigned to a school they currently support. All support multiple schools. The assessment team includes a school social worker, school psychologist, and a speech and language pathologist. After a review of the program, we recommended to Dr. Parker that we transition the classes, students, and staff from the Gatewood Center to schools closer to the student's home when possible. This change would allow more students to attend schools closer to their homes, interact more with typically developing peers, and provide increased options for staff to engage in additional learning opportunities, such as collaboration with general education teachers. This shift would also likely have a positive impact on two of the special education indicators monitored by the Virginia Department of Education. There are several positive reasons to transitioning the Gatewood classrooms. Students will be able to attend a school closer to their home, and families can share a sense of community. It is important to note that the students will continue to receive the same services they currently receive at the Gatewood Center per their individual IEP, such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech-language services, and any specialized equipment. The transition will have positive impacts on two state indicators. Six, which is the preschool least restrictive environment, and indicator seven, which looks at improvement in certain developmental areas. The transition will allow students to be in a building and have the opportunity to be closer to same-age typically developing peers. Whereas at Gatewood, this was not a possibility since they were connected to a high school wing. Looking at indicator six, which is the preschool least restrictive environment, the U.S. Office of Special Education Programs, known as OSEP, requires states to report the percentage of children three to five years of age who attend a regular early childhood program and receive the majority of special education and related services in the regular early childhood program, and a separate special education class, separate school, or residential facility. Gatewood is considered a separate facility. Indicator seven looks at progress in the areas of positive social-emotional skills, including social relationships, the acquisition and use of knowledge and skills, including early language, communication, and early literacy. And finally, the use of appropriate behavior to meet their needs. Taking a look at what this will look like, on the left of the slide are the schools where our preschool self-contained students currently attend. Please note that Gatewood is in red as we will no longer use that site for self-contained preschool. There are currently seventy-six students being served at Gatewood, either face-to-face or virtually. Forty-five are moving on to other special education programs, and the remaining thirty-one students would be assigned to the schools on the left of the slide and to the additional sites on the right, which includes Watkins Early Childhood Center and Hydenwood. Based on the map, you can see where Gatewood is located, which is considered midtown. And see the additional new locations will be Hydenwood and Watkins, which are also considered midtown. We collaborated with the following division stakeholders in discussion regarding the change in location of classes to gather their insight and to discuss the impact on each department. The feedback culminated in the option we are presenting to you today. As you can see, representation was included from various departments across the division. You can see some of the communication that has and will occur among stakeholders. Some of the timeline presented by Anne Marie applied to the PEEP program as well, such as communicating the updates with the Newport News community. This concludes my presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker. No questions at this time? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, then we will now move on to item five point oh four, which is our school renaming recommendations.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our staff, Mr. Wright, Lynn Wallen, Tracy Brooks, and team are here to present the, uh, the recommendations this evening that, uh, that have made it to my desk and, uh, will be presented to the board this evening. Uh, for the, uh, public, we are providing some context leading up to this point so that those who are joining us who may not have been in the initial stages of this process, uh, will have a full understanding of, of what, how, what it took to bring us to the, to tonight's presentation. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wright, uh, to begin the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searl's Law, Board members, and Dr. Parker. This evening, we are pleased to offer an update on the school renaming process. Special Assistant to the Superintendent Tracy Brooks, our Director of Community Relations, Michelle Price, Director of Legal Services, Lynn Wallen, and I serve as the planning team for this process, and we had the pleasure of serving with dedicated members of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. We're also pleased to have two of those members with us this evening. Former school board member, Thad Hollin, and also City of Newport News Historic Site Coordinator, Mary Kaya Seljak. I got it right, yes. You will hear from them later in the presentation. I will begin with some background, um, most of which you're familiar with. During the summer of two thousand twenty, the school board asked the superintendent to take a look at the topic that you see here on the screen. Which school names potentially do not reflect the current NMPS values of inclusion and diversity? The planning group conducted some initial research and identified several school names that may have warranted further study. Then we placed those names into three tiers. During the August school board meeting, we presented our research and the tiers to our school board. On September fifteenth, the school board voted to proceed with the renaming of the schools in Tier One, F. S. Elementary School, Lee Hall Elementary. of the schools in Tier One, Epps Elementary School, Lee Hall Elementary School, Nelson Elementary School, and Dozier Middle School. We will take a few minutes to review our approach to the school board renaming process. Following the school board vote on the schools in Tier One, Dr. Parker created our Diversity and Inclusion Task Force to guide this process. The task force held its first meeting in November, and we quickly jumped into the important work of drafting a school renaming process, the criteria, and we presented that to our school board and superintendent and community. After your approval of the new naming and renaming policy, which I'll get to in a moment, the task force began working collaboratively to develop a process to solicit names from the community, review nominations, and then narrow the list for consideration. And again, this evening, we will provide those recommendations to you by way of our superintendent. Presented here are the dedicated members of the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, consisting of eight members of the community, our executive directors and director of school leadership, the principals from the Tier One schools, and the task force planning team I shared with you earlier. We certainly appreciate the great work of this team, and there's more to come. We still have work to do with the schools that are in Tier Two and Tier Three. As I mentioned, in February, the school board voted on a revised policy for the naming facilities based on the task force's recommendation, that's policy FF. Thank you for that approval. That policy also noted criteria and the process we would use. The task force wanted to make sure that our school communities, including our students and the community at large, they were invited and they were involved in this nomination process. So the task force worked with our community relations team and developed a communications timeline to promote the school nomination process. The task force began soliciting nominations for the four schools on March eleventh. That process continued through March twenty-fourth. A press release was distributed, and the information was included in the school division and city newsletters. The renaming process was advertised in a newspaper and also on social media. Emails were distributed to targeted groups who include the Newport News Education Foundation, members of the superintendent's roundtable, all employees, parents' guardians, and of course, most important, our students. Each of our school principals also developed a process to solicit their students' input. Student voice, as you know, is very important to us. The call for input on the renaming process was also covered by the local TV news teams. Now I'd like to give you an overview of the nomination results. We received two-hundred-and-thirty nominations amongst the four schools. The above charts represent the number of name suggestions or nominations that we received for each of the four schools. This is a breakdown of the nominators' connection to Newport News Public Schools. Forty percent of our submissions came from employees, twenty-six percent from parents' guardians, and twenty-five percent from members of the community. The student percentage included here only reflects students who submitted a nomination online. Each of our school principals, again, led their own nomination process to ensure student input, and we want to thank our principals for that. At this time, I'm pleased to introduce to you members of our task force that joined us today. I did, you know, introduce them to you and give you their names, but I want to ask Mr. Holloman to come up, and he will take us through the next steps of our presentation.
Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, members of the board, and Dr. Parker, good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening, and it's been a pleasure to work with the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force on this renaming process. The task force began this important work back in November, and as Mr. Wright shared with you, our first order of business was to review the school renaming policy and make recommendations to the superintendent. We also developed a process to solicit names for the four schools in Tier One that you voted to rename. A subcommittee was designated to develop a procedure and timeline to receive community staff, parent, and student input in this process. Our task was to present the nominations to the superintendent, three for each school. So before you, you have the list of the top nominations for each school. The names before you received two or more nominations. Each school principal also developed a process to gather input, and we have included the top student nominations for each school as well. So, the next slide, excuse me, shows the top nominations for Epps Elementary School. We received several nominations for Lucas Creek, which is also a top pick from the students at Epps Elementary School. Beachmont came in second with five nominations, while Stony Run was second choice among students. A little bit about each of these three nominations. Lucas Creek was named for the creek near the school. At one time, this creek formed the northern boundary of the Mennonite colony. This name was used by the Mennonites to describe the waterway as early as eighteen ninety-seven, when they first settled in Warwick County. Lucas was likely a family name. There are several Lucas families referenced in the Warwick County census records of the eighteenth and nineteenth centuries. Our research was not able to determine which Lucas family was the namesake for the local body of water. Beachmont is an area of the city of Newport News. It is a housing community developed by Knight Brothers in the early nineteen-sixties for families in the upper end of Warwick County. Beachmont Estates is the part that is closest to Worth Boulevard, where Beachmont Drive is located. The Knight Brothers, established in nineteen fifty-eight, were one of several Mennonite real estate developers who created suburban bedroom communities in Warwick County. I'm glad I lost the phone on this thing because I can't hardly see it. I was worried about that. Nonetheless, Stony Run is a body of water near the school. It is also the name of a housing community shopping center and city-owned athletic complex. Next, we have the top choices for Lee Hall. Richard and Mildred Loving received six nominations and was also the top choice of Lee Hall students. Richard and Mildred Loving were a Virginia native who fought for their love and for the right to be married. Their Supreme Court case struck down state laws banning interracial marriage in the United States. The plaintiffs in the case were the Lovings, a white man and black woman, whose marriage was deemed illegal according to Virginia state law. Catherine Johnson received five community nominations. Catherine Johnson was an African-American mathematician whose calculations of orbital mechanics at NASA were critical to the success of the first and subsequent U.S. crew spaceships, space flights. Her career at NASA spanned thirty-three years, and she and her colleagues at NASA were featured in the recent movie Hidden Figures. Engineers Academy was the second-most favorite name for Lee Hall students. Engineers Academy was nominated by a student in honor of the school's engineering spirit and the fact that our students learn from their mistakes and keep on trying, just like real-world engineers. Engineers is also the school mascot. The next slide reflects the top nominations for Nelson. Beechwood Elementary received six community nominations, and it was also the top student selection. Beechwood is a housing complex in Beachmont. The Beechwood Manor community was started in nineteen seventy-two with the construction of the first homes by Colony Real Estate. Knollwood or Knollwood Meadows came in second among Nelson students. The name received two community nominations as well. It is a neighborhood in the Denver area of the city where the school is located. Knollwood Meadows is a seasoned community in the Denver area of the city. The community was built around the mid-nineteen-eighties. Nelson's student also, excuse me, the Nelson mascot is a knight. Noble would represent knightly characteristics, and noble was the third selection for this school, a third nomination rather. And finally, the next slide is for Dozier Middle School. The top nominations for Dozier were Ella Fitzgerald, Industrial Park, and Catherine Johnson. We received twelve nominations for Ella Fitzgerald, and it was the first student choice. Ella Fitzgerald was a famous and influential jazz singer from Newport News who had an enormous impact on the music industry. As a woman of color, she is considered an icon. The students think she is a great role model as well. The second student choice is Industrial Park, which is the street where Dozier Middle School is located. We also received seven community nominations for Catherine Johnson, who I spoke about earlier. Thank you for this opportunity to assist with the school renaming process, and I turn the presentation over to Dr. Parker.
And I would like to thank Mr. Holloman for, and all of our task force members for really leading this work moving forward over the time. And we know there was just a little thing called a pandemic taking place over the course of the year. So, you know, we obviously had some time where we were distracted, but as you can see tonight, there was a group who really stayed focused on the matter at hand, and that matter was bringing forward some recommendations to the board for the renaming of these schools. So after meeting with them to review their work and to review the context of their recommendations, I centered on four recommendations, and I'll read those out in no unnecessary order. For Epps Elementary, Stony Run Elementary was my first choice and recommendation to the board. Lee Hall Elementary was renamed Catherine Johnson Elementary. Nelson Elementary renamed to Knollwood Meadows Elementary, and Dozier Middle School renamed to Ella Fitzgerald Middle School. In reviewing the recommendations from the task force, there were such things as, I wanted to make sure, like, I think, number one choice for Epps Elementary was a creek who we could not determine the origin of the name, which family it was named after. I didn't want to leave any uncertainty there. Looking at the geographic locations where one of the schools was actually located in, in the Knollwood Meadows community, that was an easier fit for the name of that elementary school. And then there were just compelling reasons to support the name recognition names, which were names that were recommended for multiple schools in the selection process. So these are my recommendations to the board, Mr. Chairman. And at this point in the process, as we had discussed, my recommendations this evening do not necessarily have to be the final naming of names of these schools. It is now the board's process. And with that being said, the board will have the opportunity over the next month to deliberate on the superintendent's recommendations. And if you need further context, we are now here to advise the board as best possible and give you the information, any information that you may need to make to make a determination at the May board meeting. And whatever that process, Mr. Chairman, would be, we will be happy to facilitate and assist the board in that process. The question came up, once the schools are named, we will immediately begin planning for changes to signage. We will use some end-of-year funding to support the naming of signage, and it will be a phased process over the next two years as we change the signage to those schools and make the adjustments necessary. Our task force will continue to be, and start as directed by the board, to continue to vet the Tier Twos and Tier Threes schools that were identified at the beginning of the year. So we anticipate this obviously will not be the last presentation or recommendation we bring to the board as we review those schools in Tier Two and Tier Three. So at this time, Mr. Wright and team, and myself, we stand ready for any questions that the board may have.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Questions from the board? All right. No questions at this time. As Dr. Parker mentioned, we will deliberate on this matter and take this issue up for action at our May board meeting. Thank you, Dr. Parker, and the task force for all of your hard work. We'll move on then to the next item on our agenda, which is 5.05, the attendance report, 5.06, the membership report, 5.07, the construction report. Board members, you have copies of those reports in your packets. Are there any questions on those reports? All right. Hearing no questions, and we'll move on to item 5.08, which is comments by the superintendent. Dr. Parker, please take away.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really pleased with the work of some of our staff, of our staff and the presenters this evening. It's a lot of work to come to prepare for a board meeting, and as you can see, there's a lot of innovation and great work taking place. We had our workshop session this morning, this afternoon, with summer programming, and we're looking forward to having a great summer session this year that will provide a lot of support to our students. So I'd like to start off by saying thank you to my staff for all of the hard work that's taking place on a daily basis. I want to begin my remarks tonight by thanking the Budget Committee, Mrs. Rousseau, Ms. Minto, the Budget Office staff, and our senior staff team for your leadership and support during our budget development process. We'll continue to work in collaboration at this point with city council to ensure that our school division has the financial resources to ensure that all of our students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. In recognitions, two of our student artists earned accolades in the Virginia School Boards Association's Tidewater Regional Art Contest. We'd like to recognize those students. Sarah Zhang from Crichtonton Middle School placed first in her division, and Tina Nguyen from Woodside High School earned third place for the high-school level competition. The winning artwork will be featured in the VSPA website, spotlighted during the VSPA Annual Conference Convention, and featured in VSPA publications throughout the year. Congratulations to Sarah and Tina. I'd also like to mention that this is National Autism Awareness Month, and Newport News Public Schools has a wide range of resources and support to advance all students. So I'd like to thank our special education teachers for supporting our students and our children with autism. We're pleased to announce that the city has awarded Quinn Evans the contract for designing Huntington Middle School and also the design of the Southeast Community Resource Area, which will be the campus that Huntington Middle School will be located on moving forward. We look forward to meeting with the representatives from Quinn Evans in early May as we begin to work with them to plan for the reopening of Huntington Middle School in August of 2024. And finally, tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day, and I want to take a moment to thank all of our office professionals, administrative assistants, secretaries, and office assistants in the school division that work diligently every day. There will be a lot of food around the place tomorrow and around our school division, thanking these great workers, the backbones of our school division. So thanks for your hard work and dedication to our staff, students, and families. And that concludes my remarks tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Then we'll move on to item six, which is another opportunity to hear from the public. Matt Pluck, do we have any cards? All right. Do we have any cards? Seeing there's no cards, and we will now move on to matters by the school board. Then, Mr. Moody, please start us off tonight, and don't leave out the big news of your, the big news, big good news for yourself.
Well, good evening. I want to begin by thanking our student leaders, as this is a student leaders' week. I want to thank our student leaders, first Newport News Public Schools, for the ability and the access that you give students to be able to lead in various capacities. And I'm grateful even that you all have opted and seen it best fit to choose a student representative to sit on this very school board. That is a vital and important piece of leadership. I want to thank you, thank all of the student leaders out there for all that you do, for your tireless work to make your school community the best it can possibly be. I want to also, in the last eight weeks now of school, I know you're ready for summer break, student family, teachers, and staff, but I want to thank you all, you know, for all that you all have done and all that you're going to continue to do. But I want to tell you to just keep on going just a little bit longer, and then, once the pollen and rain has gone away, summer will be here, and we'll be able to go on the beach and do the things that we want to do. So just keep on keeping on. I am excited. I don't know if I'm supposed to say this, but you let me to say this.
I told you I was going to call you out.
I am humbled to say that I am the one. I am humbled to say that I am the Wayne, Dr. Wayne Lett recipient. That does mean that I do receive $10,000 over the course of the four years, breaking down into two, two thousand five hundred each year. And that does mean that I will be returning back to Newport News Public Schools for at least three years to serve as a teacher. So I'm very honored. Thank you. I would like to conclude my remarks.
All right, yeah, I told you it was good news. We're so very proud of you, and you're a real hero. We look forward to all the contributions that you're going to re for our community. Thank you. Ms. Ammon?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Brown, and congratulations, Mr. Moody, again. I have the privilege of attending the Education Foundation meetings, board meetings each month, so we had a bit of a preview to some of that, so congratulations. And I just want to say, you know, it's, it's exciting and encouraging to see, hear, see and hear all that's going on. We've got graduation plans, looking forward to next year. It's encouraging to see, to see us kind of mobilizing resources, to come around students that have had some, especially the early learners, a little more assistance to get the, get their growth in, in reading and literacy. And I think just an encouragement and reminder to parents, keep your eyes and ears on your inboxes and information. Our work session was wonderful on the summer plans, so I think there'll be a lot of good information coming out there and opportunities that you'll want to jump on as soon as you, as soon as you hear the choices, so.
Thank you, Ms. Ammon. All right, Dr. Best?
Good evening. First, I would like to thank all the staff for the wonderful reports. It was a lot of good information tonight, and some wonderful things are happening in Newport News, so thank you for your continuous hard work. I would like to take a minute to acknowledge that this is also, I believe it's Professional Librarian Month, or, but I just want our librarians and media specialists to know that we appreciate all that you do and that you are very, very vital part of our school division. I'm an avid reader, and librarians were always some of my most favorite people in the building, so I want you to know, we thank you for all that you do. And I also like to acknowledge the administrative professionals, of course, you guys are the ones that keep everything going, so thank you to the administrative professionals. I'm very happy about what's happening with Huntington Middle School. My other southeast partner over there, he can tell you that we can't go to Piggly Wiggly, we can't go to the hair shop, we can't go anywhere where someone is not asking us what is happening with Huntington. So it makes me very happy to say that progress is being made and that a sign will be going up very, very soon at the Huntington site, announcing a 2024 targeted date for opening. So I'm very happy about that. And so the last thing that I like to say, I ponder whether or not to say this, but of course, if I probably not supposed to say it, then my mind will tell me to say it, so I'm going to say it. So there has been some conversation around proms for students, and as you all know, because of what's going on with COVID-19, school divisions are unable to have proms. We just cannot accommodate proms. But there has been some talk throughout communities that different parents are having proms for various groups of children. And of course, parents, we can't tell you what to do in your home, on your time, with your money, and so we're not trying to do that. But what I am asking people, it's just to kind of keep it in mind, because we don't want it to become a have versus a have-not type of thing. Some people in the community have reached out and said that they're willing to, to do some things to help some of those that are less fortunate. So there's a possibility that Mr. Ely and I, I think I can go ahead and pull, you know, say, we, we talked briefly about it, that if needed, we, we're not going to spearhead anything, and nothing is going to be done on behalf of the school division, but we are community workers, and there may be some efforts to pull a couple of things together to help some of those that may not be able to afford it. So I just encourage everyone to keep that in mind when you're doing some of the wonderful things for students at the end of the year. Thank you, and those are my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Best. All right, Mr. Ely?
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the staff and all the amazing reports that y'all presented to us today. I know it took a lot of hard work and a lot of detail goes in to planning these long reports to make sure the community know, as well as the board and the superintendent know what's going on, and I appreciate that. I also like to thank the teachers. Y'all have been, y'all are really the, the rock that's keeping the school division going. I definitely know it's hard work, been, with being out a whole year, coming back to school to teach during a pandemic, as my hats go off to you, the teachers, the staff, the janitors, been working around the clock to make sure the schools are clean. So I want to definitely thank the teachers and the entire staff of Newport News Public School System for making sure our children are safe and making sure the staff is safe at the same time. Congratulations, Mr. Moody. You're an amazing guy. We look nothing but for greatness out of you. We look forward to have you come to Newport News Public School System, and one day, you might be the next superintendent. So that's, that's definitely. That's definitely an honor for you to receive the, the Dr. Wayne Lett Award. Also, I'm excited about the preschool plans. Early prevention is the best, you know, and I think that's good. Also excited about what Dr. Parker said about, hopefully next year, our plan is to get all kids back into school. Everybody knew I was the advocate, stay home, stay home, stay home, stay home, stay home. But after riding around town, exercising in the morning, seeing little Johnny, little Michael just running around, I'm like, he been outside for like four hours now. I know he's supposed to be in class. So me being a school police patrol with going out my duties, I say, these kids really belong in school because they're not getting too much of an education. You got some parents who make sure their kids getting the best education. You got some parents who say, little Michael, go outside and play. So we definitely need to make sure that kids aren't in school next year. I think that's the best place for them. And with all the mitigations that the school system have put in place, far as teachers getting vaccinated, who wanted to get vaccinated, far as evil with the social distancing of the boards, Newport News has done a great job, even with talking with other school board members across the United States that you meet at different conferences, they say, wow, Newport News, y'all very aggressive in making sure your students, your teachers and staff are safe. So I definitely feel like, you know, it's the time, even talking with teachers, a lot of them were kind of afraid to go in a classroom, but now we had that conversation, we're just like, this was the best thing ever. It feels so good to be back to have some normalcy to it. So we will get through this. I do understand some teachers have underlying conditions, and Newport News Public School System and Human Resources has been very accommodating in making sure if you have underlying conditions, that your doctor have sent you notes and, hey, you virtual. But those, there has been a lot of teachers have expressed interest, who want to come back in the school. And we all know that's what's best for kids, and we in this position, it's not what's best for us, it's what's best for children, because they are our future. And that's all I got to say. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ely. All right, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank you first for allowing us to speak. I was, I was joking them earlier. Yeah, it's been a while, right? Okay, I think they know this too. But anyway, first, I would like to thank all of the students in school for this last year, because it has truly been a, a test of, of their character and their will. You know, this is one of these points in time in, in their life where they will be able to look back and see a bookmark, and they will have a couple more as they go through life, but this is probably most of the first one, where they've, you know, met some, met a challenge, and, and most have exceeded that challenge. Mr. Moody, you know, congratulations to you on your accomplishments, and, and I'm not, not just doing it for what you have accomplished, but for what you will accomplish. You know, you're one of those individuals, you can't quite put your finger on it, but you have a special quality, many special qualities. So, you know, I know you're going to do great things in this world, and, you know, it's a great testament to you, your family, the community, and to the Newport News Public School System. So I really appreciate all your, all your work. Also, to the staff, administrators, Dr. Parker, this has been a bookmark in you all's careers as well. You know, the first time I went to combat, it was one of those things where you, you see it on the movies and you, you know, but until you're actually in it, when you truly understand what, dealing with issues are, and, and, and that those decisions that one or a group of you all make really has an effect on all. And so I think you guys have been steadfast, you have been solid in your approach and your decision-making processes, and, and, and you can see it now. So I really appreciate that, Dr. Parker. Thank, thank you for all your effort and your staff. Also, I wanted to thank all of my school board counterparts. Over the last five, six months, we went through a lot of training together. We've learned a lot about each other, and I, I think we truly understand what it means to be prepared to provide policies and procedures. You know, this is what, this is why Dr. Parker hires staff members to do the hard work and, again, just being in training with each and one of you. I've learned a lot about everyone here, you know, their decision-making process, and I can truly say that, you know, this is a winning team. We are free to disagree with one another. We not just disagree, but we also provide solutions to one another if, if, if there's an issue. So I just want to applaud you all for that and thank you for all the support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll dill Mr. Harris' comments as well about working with this particular board. It's been a pleasure. Over the last few months, man, during this time, it's, we've become and we've grown a lot closer together, so there's great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. And, Mr. Moody, congratulations. I as well, am part of the Newport News Education Foundation. So, you know, I, I guess, you know, I was kind of prepared for that, and we made a very, very, very good choice. And Huntington, I, I guess I could say I was one of those who, who led the way to getting a new Huntington. And now the sign's going to come up, you know, here shortly, and I'm going to have a big smile on my face. And so when that first dirt is turned, I'll be there, and hopefully, when the ribbon is cut, I'll be there as well. So Huntington, it shall rise again. Again, I want to thank all of the teachers and counselors and cafeteria workers, the bus drivers, for your, you know, unrelentless effort to making sure that our kids got the best education they could on this unprecedented time. And I'm, I'm so, the, the, the report I heard during the work session about our summer, an amount of funds that we're actually putting in to catch up, and I'm not sure if you ever could catch up. You know, time waits for no one. So once someone says, how do you make up time, you know, for a year? We don't really make it up. We just, we, we, you know, you, we, we tool, you know? We find a way, not necessarily make it up, but we find another way to learn. And so we'll never make up that particular time, but we can, you know, imagine, think outside the box, which I heard today, and then we can, we can't make, make up, but we definitely can catch up. You can't make up time, but you can just catch up, you know? So we do that in the relay races. You may be behind, but you, depending on what leg you run, you know, you pass that baton off, and before you know it, we're right back at the front again. I believe this school division has the leadership, Dr. Parker, and the team, and all of the teachers that are out there, and the principals, and the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, and, most importantly, our students. We have the will, we have the knowledge, and I know we have the fortitude that makes us Newport News proud. That's it. I look forward to our future.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Madam Vice Chair?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we have learned so much between this time last year and this year, and it was really evident in tonight's presentation. Hats off to Dr. Parker and his team. I just heard the joy and the excitement in the presentations tonight. You know, we've had to hear the hard stuff, and that's been a challenge for his team to have to come to the podium and show. Tonight was, was a little bit of a flip on that. We heard positive things about going to middle school, we heard about this preschool program. The R2L report was great, and to forward it into the students getting back in school five days a week, when we come back in the fall. We've heard great things about our summer plans, and all of this is capable and possible because of us moving to one-to-one, because there's elements of that where we're going to have to remain virtual and where we're going to have to rely on that foundational quick groundwork that we had to lay. So hats off to Chris Jenkins and his team for showing us the path to what we need to be doing in this space and allowing us to be able to make some of the decisions that we made tonight. I want to say that it was really great to attend the National School Board Association. Sometimes you feel like our workshops this past, past month, sometimes you feel like you're making these decisions for your district alone, that your district is so incredibly unique, and it is. However, the challenges remain for all districts across the nation, and it was really a joy to hear other school boards talking about what their challenges have been, what they have done to answer the call. And it was nice to be in some of those meetings and be able to share best practices that we're doing in Newport News Public Schools. And finally, Mr. Moody, congratulations. So your passion is the kind that we need back here in Newport News, so I'm so glad you're going to be coming back. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, so I'll attempt to be brief and just echo some of the comments that were already made, but as well, a little bit of housekeeping. We'll see each other very shortly here in a week, because we have our next joint meeting with city council, where we'll be able to discuss the Southeast Community and Huntington Middle School. So that's going to be happening next week, April 27th. So look forward to seeing you, you all, your smiling faces here shortly again. And I'll just share that I saw a sight that, you know, last month here at Todd Stadium that, you know, really brought a lot of emotions out of me, which was seeing Warwick in Woodside as we, you know, came to the board meeting as it pulled in, they were out in the field warming up. And I was in such shock, because through this year, it's been such a challenging year. I was in such shock and awe that I said, oh, no, that's, that's just some kids, they're just practicing. That's not really a game. And then as I got closer, I saw, wait, there's a team with that uniform, another team with another uniform, they're on different sides of the field, these, they're going to play tonight. And I was just in such, such shock, and it was so, so, you know, heartwarming, you know, Mr. Ely and Dr. Best, after the meeting, said, hey, let's, let's go over there and take a look over there, check out the game. And I didn't want to at the time, I said, no, I'm going to get back in my car, because I don't want to be out there standing on the field crying. Who is this, who is this crazy person over here at Todd Stadium standing here crying? Call the police on me. So, because it was just so emotional and, and such a, a wonderful sight to see something that I, you know, thought maybe I was never going to see again through this pandemic, it's been so hard. You know, young people being able to participate in the extracurricular activities, being a part of the community, really getting into, engage with one another, and we don't know how much, you know, we miss that so much. We heard tonight, we're going to, we were, you know, we, we have the bold leadership and the vision to bring it forward. Next year, we're planning to bring everybody back to school, five days a week. We're going to have a, you know, we're, we're planning to have a regular school year. That's, that's our, that's our plan. So, you know, I want to echo that and just let the whole community know that that's the plan. Now, the only thing that I can see right now that can hurt that plan is if the community doesn't do its part. So if there's one message I just want to leave everyone with tonight is, please go get your vaccination. This week, you got the, the alert, I got it on my phone as well, everyone got the alert, everyone sixteen years and older, you can go get the vaccine. The thing that's going to allow us to have that five days a week school next year, get everybody playing football. everybody playing football and baseball and soccer and doing volleyball and everything, music and everything else, we talked about Summer Institute for the Arts, all the things that we really want to see our young people doing, what's going to enable that is folks going out and getting that vaccine, because when you get that vaccine, then we're gonna be able, in our, in our community here in Newport News, be, you know, vaccinated against these, these difficult variants and be able to keep our schools open, because that's what's, that through this time period, that's what has kept our staff in school, it's what's been able to keep our schools open, is that our staff has been vaccinated. So please, everyone, you know, within the sound of my voice, the one thing you can do, even if you don't have kids in school, to do your part in our city, go get the vaccination, because doing so is gonna allow us to have the kind of school year that our, that our seniors deserve. You know, I, I think about Mr. Moody, we, we, we talk, we talk about it, you know, so proud of you. The seniors haven't had the year that they deserve, because we've been in this quarantine. So let's have next year, let's have the year that the seniors really deserve, and, and let them get through their full slate of activities. So with that, that's all I have for tonight. We stand adjourned.
Goodbye.